We're going to get, change computer systems and then jump into the council meeting. It'll start in a minute or two. Good.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I'll talk to you later.
Two questions. Nothing for tonight? Double check. He makes a decision.
I don't think it's in the packet.
You look good.
Their call. I don't want them.
So, I can be here or celebrate my mom's 84th birthday with her? Is that what you're saying?
Pardon? No use to hear from you. You ready, Diane?
No, we already, we already celebrated.
No, I'm sorry. Um, yes. We are ready.
I'd like to welcome everybody. We're going to start shortly. If you have comments, for the comments and suggestions from the citizens, there are blue cards in the back. Please fill out a blue card. You can give them to any of our staff and we'll read those up and have you come up and share your comments with the council. Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to call the order. The City of Oconomowoc Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
We'd all rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Call, roll, please.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rozick.
Here.
Alderman Zappel.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Great. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of minutes of January 18th, 2022.
Some move, Rozick.
Second.
Kavieski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next are comments and suggestions from citizens. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment or share anything on any topic with council this evening? I don't have any blue cards. With no blue cards and no one standing up, we're going to move forward. We have no consent agenda items as listed below, so we're going to move on to committee reports, protection and welfare. Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3009 granting new 2021 to 2022 Class B intoxicating liquor fermented malt beverage license to Ginger Ovens. Ms. Conan?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Protection and Welfare took a motion or made a motion to move this on to council. They moved it forward with no recommendation. So, we have an application from Ginger Ovens. It's a new business that is located in the Fowler Lake Village in one of the suites, Unpleasant, and they are looking for a full Class B liquor license. They do meet all statutory and city code requirements to apply for the license. I provided in the packet from the applicant a floor plan and it also includes their hours of operation and their seating capacity. They have 25, room for 25 people inside and they're looking at seasonal outdoor seating of 12. Their hours of operation are listed as Monday through Thursday, 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And Friday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Their menu lists breakfast items, which includes pastries, but as well as a meal, a breakfast meal, and then lunch items, sandwiches, I believe wraps, things like that. There are no dinner or supper items listed on the menu and I do not know, I did not ask the owner if he planned on adding dinner, but since it closes at 6:00 p.m., the indication would be that it's more of a breakfast and lunch type of a diner. We do have two regular Class B licenses available. Those are the $600 license and then we do have seven reserve and that's our $10,000 license available. But you must issue a regular before you can issue a reserve. So, if council grants the license to the applicant, it would be a regular license. And it, of course, would come up for renewal during the renewal period in June. So, just like any other license. This is a new license, so council, what council is tasked to do when it becomes a new license is to fully look over the application in making their decision, consider any public comment and any safety concerns in deciding to issue or not to issue. I also provided in the packet something council had put together several years ago when we had no liquor licenses and we were going through all the actions to get some back. So, we had licenses to attract businesses because the city had lost businesses, many businesses for a number of years because we had no licenses available to offer those establishments, full liquor licenses, that is. And so, I have that list also. I provided in the packet just as a helpful tool to help council make a decision in, you know, how they want to go with the license.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Conan? Alderman Zappel.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, a couple of questions here. You mentioned that AJ's has not surrendered their license in committee, correct?
That's correct.
And then, are there any other similar venues that have liquor license that this restaurant is trying to obtain such as other coffee shops in our community?
Since council took all the actions to get licenses back that were not being used, this is the first application we have received that is not for what we would call the best and highest use for a Class B license. We do have a couple of other establishments in the city who do have a license that have a similar operation with putting, offering liquor in coffees, not having a full service bar. It's not really a big part of their menu, if you will, you know, having drinks available. Those licenses were issued before council took all the action that they did to get some of the licenses back that were not being used. But council did not take any action to revoke or not renew a license that was not being used to the best and highest use.
Okay.
Those were established businesses.
And say if council took an action to either lay this over or vote this down, if we voted it down, how long would the applicant have to wait to, if they were to reapply?
The applicant could reapply in six months. The applicant also would have the option. We do have no quotas on beer and wine licenses, which they would also qualify for because they do serve food. That, you know, so those are some other options.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Kavieski.
A couple of things. They do have very good minimum rolls, by the way. AJ's was mentioned. AJ's has been closed down since November.
First of December.
Yeah. What is the requirement for establishment to be operational? They can be closed down for a certain period of time before we visit them and say, you have to give it back?
90 days.
We, our code says if a, if a operation ceases, after 90 days, the city can take actions to revoke, but then you still have to go through the revocation process. You have to have a hearing, notice the licensee. You know, that puts you pretty close to renewal time. And of course, there is no indication right now that AJ's would file application to renew that license.
Because that license stays with the location, not with the establishment. So, if they were to move to another location within the city, it doesn't go with them.
No, but they could apply for a transfer.
Right, yeah. So, just wanted to clear that because we talked, and there was a lot of effort in making sure that we had licenses available to have these conversations. And if you take a look at the list in regards to policy, they do fall at the bottom of the list for utilization. So, I'm not excited about it. I apologize for what that might mean to what the intent is. And I don't know if you could start to extend that beer and wine into your mix for lunchtime opportunities. But just based on the utilization and what we know is coming into the community with the developments on North Main, which is going to be complimentary to the activity at Olympia, I think moving this forward is going to limit some of those opportunities for discussions to get higher and best use into the community.
Alderman Rozick.
Yeah, I, when we establish these, these kind of guidelines for giving out these liquor licenses, the goal was to avoid what had happened for years before, which some of us were around for that. It was one of my big pushes and councils to get our liquor licenses back and use it for development that kind of complied with this and then we set up this criteria. I think as far as how I'm looking at this, I'm not looking at this as necessarily what could come down the road and other developments is my only criteria. I'm not really thinking about that so much. But when we look at the criteria we've established and, you know, what we're seeing here, limited hours, no dinner, it's not really a bar, it's not a highest and best use. They can get a beer and wine deal. We've made past mistakes in granting liquor licenses to a variety of businesses that aren't really using them for the highest and best use for our community. Unfortunately, that's not our problem, right? The state limits how many liquor licenses we get and we only get so many. And when we see stuff on the horizon and we try to establish and look at this criteria, I just don't think they fit it. And like Alderman Zappel pointed out, you know, they can reapply in six months. And if, you know, nothing is coming and we got nothing else, you know, potentially we revisit it then. So, I'm against moving forward with this tonight. I'm going to vote against it.
I got a follow-up. Would, would they have to wait six months to apply for the beer and wine?
No.
No.
Any other comments from council? Does the applicant at this time want to make any comments? Uh, yeah, come on up here, it'd be great. Thank you, sir. If you just state your name and where you live, please.
Oh, sorry, what was after that?
Uh, your name and where you live, please.
Oh, um, you mean address? Okay. 3740 North Crescent. That's in Oconomowoc. I just want to clarify a couple of things. I know it wasn't asked at, over at the clerks, but I am going to offer more of a dinner-esque menu for later in the evening. And those hours that I gave for being open are, as just initial, I do want to be open later. It's just a matter of if I can get the staff and if I can just see how that all kind of plays out. And it's not just coffee infused drinks. It's also all the craft beverages, you know, including beers, wines, craft cocktails. But the, you know, just thought coffee infused things would just be kind of the main grab initially, just to help give them that option in the morning, just to have that morning business as well.
Counsel, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I, I would just say, that information is helpful. I don't think it necessarily would, would change my, my, my position in regards to the discussion we've had. And I would encourage you to take a look at the beer and wine as that step. And then, six months from now, if you're like, look, you know what, we've introduced this, we got some traction with that. Staffing is in place and now, you know, we're open till eight and we really kind of moved up the rungs of your criteria. And we'd like to do the following things. And that makes a lot of sense to re-address then as opposed to, because again, they're very limited. So, if, if council were to grant that now and, and it wasn't going to go down that path, it's hard, it's hard to get back. And you'd be, and it's not going to be something that you're going to be like, ah, you know what? We tried to get staff and we couldn't get staff and we tried this and that didn't work. And, and there's going to be demand for that within the next year. So, it'll, and it'll be tied up. I would think you're not going to come back up here and say, yeah, you know what, we tried here, here you go. So, I'd rather see you take, take those steps to say, we're going to do this first. We have unlimited beer and wine. Extend those hours, get that in place, come back and, and let's address it then.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I concur with everything that Lou said and I would vote against this, but I wish you good luck in trying to expand the business and we'd love to see you back here again, reapplying.
Any further comments or questions? Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Zappel.
Just like to make a motion to lay this over.
You'd like to make a motion, what?
To, to lay this over for six months.
No, no.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
So, if no motion is made, it kind of dies, right?
So, I'd like to entertain a motion.
If there's no motion, as Alderman Kavieski said, then it dies, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to deny the Class B license application of Ginger Ovens LLC based on discussion of council members.
Second, Ellis. Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Shellpepper. Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to unfinished and old business. Consider Act on Ordinance 21-01024 to create a planned development, PD-4-21 overlay with GC General Commercial Zone located at 1408 to 1414 Summit Avenue, 1350 to 1375 Royal Mile Road and 1520 Unity Drive for Olympia Fields Commercial Development and to state that this ordinance change is a second reading for consideration. Mr. Duffy. I mean, Mr. Gallo. Sorry about there, Bob.
Thank you. I'll just give a brief overview. We, we reviewed this at the last meeting. The council was in agreement with the exemptions being requested, all six of them. The five, you said, you know what, we're good with the five exemptions as presented. The sixth exemption was specifically regarding building height of four buildings on the west side of Olympia Fields Drive from the roundabout all the way up to the Stormwater Detention Facility. There's four buildings. And I, I took the spirit of your discussion as well as the motion and I incorporated it in. And I, maybe I just, for the record, just to get us started, I'll, I'll read the, the new language in the ordinance that was in your packet for building height. It says, "Building height. The principal building height of 50 feet is hereby amended to the following. The four buildings north of the proposed roundabout and west of Olympia Fields Drive, three of which are highlighted in purple on Exhibit A, may exceed the 50-foot height requirement and are allowed a building height of 65 feet. In addition to the 65 feet, these four proposed buildings are allowed 10 additional feet of architectural elements such as, but not limited to, elevator and stairway towers, trellises, awnings and HVAC equipment. The two mixed-use buildings closest to the roundabout will contain retail on the first and possibly extended retail to the second floor and four stories of residential units. The two buildings are not to exceed five stories. The building north of the mixed-use buildings is designated as a medical office building with a height of 65 feet and the building adjacent to the stormwater pond is designated as a hotel with a building height of 65 feet. All four of these buildings are to contain building step backs of no less than five feet with the final building design approval to be by both the Common Council and the Architectural Commission." That is the ordinance in front of you. I feel there could be some improvement to my language after drafting it and reading through it a few times. We don't have a minimum building size, but that was not part of your motion. Also, the approval process could get a little cumbersome, having two distinct bodies being both approvals. What if one likes it and one doesn't? So, you know, I think ideally it would go through all the approvals, planned, commissioned, and architectural. Then we would bring it here for your final review. And if you don't like it, we could kick it back to the Architectural Commission, who would have the final approval. And that, I can reword that. This is basically your motion. I had some issues with, you know, in the enforcement of the approval process. So, there's minimum building height, there's the approval process, maximum building height. I think I have 65 feet plus 10 feet for the architectural elements. We don't have the 10-foot architectural elements for the two other buildings, the hotel and the medical office. That's not in here, so maybe that could be improved. And then, the, the step back is a little loosely worded. It just says no less than five feet. That was your motion. We do have very precise wording of step backs for our downtown district that talks about a five foot within the first 30 feet and then 10 feet beyond that. And I could mirror that language, so it's consistent if, if that was the preference of this. And I have that language right here with me that I could read you verbatim, what it would, would say. So, with that said, I'd be happy to answer any, any questions about building heights.
Alderman Kavieski.
Great review and presentation. I appreciate some of the, the review of those details in, in zoning ordinance 17.208, specifically Parent 4, Parent D, as it applies to building step back. You know, I, I think this council is really good about what, what makes sense from a policy standpoint and if, if that makes sense, replicating that policy and not recreating the wheel every time. And 17.208, Parent 4, Parent D, as it applies to the downtown overlay reads, "Building step back, step, step taller buildings away from the adjacent lower scale buildings, all buildings taller than 30 feet shall incorporate a step back of a minimum of five feet at the 30-foot or lower building height level. Buildings with an overall height of 50 feet or greater shall incorporate a minimum of one five-foot step back in the first 30 feet and a second 10-foot step back thereafter." You see what that looks like with Fowler Lake Village, so from a visual, that's easy to, for, for anybody on council to kind of reference, as well as within the community to see what that means. So, I think that, that language incorporated into what moves forward here makes a lot of sense to me. There is also language within that downtown overlay that we reviewed that makes sense to me in the general site design standards that identifies minimum building height and maximum building height. And we had some discussion a couple of weeks ago and I think that really applies and makes sense to me as well because you don't want to see 65 feet here and 30 feet here and 60, it gets, it gets wonky, which is why that was put into the overlay for the downtown. And that would be a minimum height of 40 foot from the ground level with a maximum height of 65 feet from the ground level plus 10 feet for architectural elements, as you described, which would include trellis and, and elevator shaft and those things. And again, I believe two weeks ago, we had great conversation in regards to what that would look like. If you take a look at Fowler Lake Village, I think that's in line with the scale there to a certain extent. And we also talked about what the new hotel looks like over by Chili's and what the scale there looks like. So, we, we have some visual representations that we didn't have in place that Jason's kind of going through right now, which is kind of nice. Not only from a council standpoint, but again, from a community standpoint because there is concern about what height does to the aesthetic of a welcoming small town feel. So, and I think that's what Alderman Shellpepper really wanted to make sure we got right with requesting the renderings. I do agree and that if renderings come back here to council, the council can't arbitrarily say we like or dislike something without criteria associated with that or we end up in court. So, having it go through the architectural planning, our normal process that identifies what those things are and having it come back here for a review, I think is great. But I, I don't see this body, not just these people here on this body, but this body, making a decision arbitrarily that potentially could put us in legal jeopardy at some point. From a process policy standpoint, if it, if it hits all the criteria and goes through architectural, it should come here because that's, there are more eyes on it here for the community to see than at the Architectural Committee or through planning. Just more people pay attention to it. So, I'd, I'd love to see that come back here for review, not final approval.
Other comments? Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, I think Lou just kind of made my own point, which is why I wanted to see the renderings before we give them the legal authority to have a 65-foot exemption. Hence why I would encourage us all to, you know, put that demand within the, or requirement within the ordinance. But I, you know, I saw how that went last time. But I, I think he kind of makes the point. And in terms of the set, the step backs, Jason, what do we need to do to amend it so that we are conforming with like the Fowler Lake prototype that we, you know, had kind of presented in the last meeting?
At this exhibit that's on the screen is the two step backs. See, we have, one, one is right here. That, that pushes the building, so we have the lower level, non-residential, and then that steps back. And then we have a second step back here. I'll use the red dot up, up on this layer. So, in order to kind of mirror this building design, we have this, the, the language that Lou referenced already in the code and you could direct staff to put that in, in this ordinance. We have, you know, a motion and approval of the first reading of this ordinance, but I, not the attorney, but you could do probably a friendly amendment to this and, and say that, because it was noticed to talk about exemptions for building height. So, we could amend this to include the language that's in our, our downtown ordinance for step backs.
So, maybe this is a good point because we need to find out if that's what council wants to do. So, you have the overlay for downtown. Do you want to take those same principles and put them in a different location? Alderman Rozick.
So, it sounds like the, right now, that the topic is a minimum heights for the other two buildings, so that doesn't look hodgepodge there. And doing something to adjust the overall height so that all four could be the same height with the same extra 10 feet. And then, an issue about the step backs. I, I think the reason we did the downtown step backs the way we did, it's a little different. You have sidewalk right up to the edge of the building and you have, you know, kind of a canyon feel when you're in a downtown area surrounded by tall buildings. We don't have that same effect out there. Well, yeah, I was here when we drafted the downtown overlay and we spent 10 meetings, give or take, with several public comment sessions to go over that. And the concern when we did the downtown overlay was what happened to the building across from the city beach, which was straight up and down, right on top of the sidewalk. And we wanted to alleviate that by creating the step backs. What we're dealing with out in Olympia is there's not a canyon feel because there's not going to be buildings on both sides of it. So, I don't, I don't think we need So I don't, I don't think we need to change what the motion was, which was the top layer, the top level of occupied building could be set back five feet. Maybe we could do more, seven and a half, ten, I don't care. But we did have a motion that passed that said the top occupied level should be stepped back five feet, and that was it. I think we want them to maximize their square footage in that area if we're looking to have them build that building. So to force a second step back out there where there's no concerns about other buildings around it or the canyon field doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I think we should get them to maximize the space. As far as minimum height, I don't know. I mean, someone should ask the developer what they think about a minimum height. What if they can't fill forty-four stories? What if they can't fill three stories in the medical office building? Do they not build it at all? I think that's a significant concern. I don't want it to look hodgepodge there, but I'm concerned that if we set a minimum height, that they say, hey, we got an office, you know, medical office that wants to come in, they're going to do ten thousand square feet, but they're not going to go up four stories, they're only going to go up three. And if they have to go four, we can't afford to do it, and we're not going to do it. We're going to go to Delfield or Heartland. So I think we, I'd love to hear what the developer has to say about the building minimum, if he's mad, if you have a comment on that.
Can you come up to the podium, Mr. Maroni?
Sorry, Mr. Maroni.
Thank you. Once again, Matt Maroni with Wongar Partners, so thank you for inviting me. Yeah, I think that's a valid concern. I think, you know, setting a minimum height, I mean, we're, our goal would be to try to maximize that, but with market demand, you know, especially on the office market side, you know, it's not as strong as what it was, you know, when we first started designing this project and COVID came along. So that would be a concern that we would have. I mean, our goal would, of course, be to try to maximize it.
Yeah, if you could, if you could fill five levels.
Right, we would.
Of course.
Right, absolutely.
But if you get, if you get a tenant that comes in that says, whoever, it's Medical College of Wisconsin.
Correct.
Whatever, a satellite, and they say, look, we're going to come in, we want to build this awesome building, but we only need three levels. We don't need four.
Right.
And if you're going to make us do four, we're going to go somewhere else. I mean, that's, that's a net loss for the city, in my opinion, by creating a minimum there.
Yeah, it would, it would limit the market.
Well, and we're not setting a minimum in any of these other buildings we want to add the height to, because if you get someone that comes in and says, look, we want to build those two buildings in the corner, but we only need four levels.
Yep.
You know, we're not saying it has to be a minimum of fifty or forty. I don't think we want to do that. To me, that seems artificial, so.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Well, we keep talking about the Worthington. So the Worthington is how far off from the sidewalk.
Zero step back.
Okay, so we're asking for five feet though, right, for those, those two buildings around the roundabout. So that's a five-foot setback, so it's basically going to be right up against the sidewalk, just like the Worthington. And then you're talking about the step backs. The Worthington step, it goes straight up, basically, and that's what you're asking them to do right now, is go straight up except five feet, right at the top, which isn't really like a step back. So you're talking about trying to not replicate the Worthington, but that seems to be what we're doing right here. So we have the two buildings that are right on the roundabout, that are, the sidewalks are right up against it. So I just, I don't, I don't get where you're saying that it's, it's not like the tunnel effect. It's basically the same. The Worthington isn't, there's not huge buildings on each side of it, it's looking out at the lake. So it's, you're going to have an empty spot still on the other side of these buildings, and it's going to act in the same way, so. That's why I think, you know, it's another thing to consider. That's why I'd like to see that, I'd like to see the step backs incorporated into, into this PD overlay.
Alderman Kavieski.
So the discussion of a minimum height was brought up by you two weeks ago, and I think it was valid then, and I think it's valid now. I don't necessarily think that we need to pigeonhole that particular building as a medical office building. It could be, be whatever. Let the market figure out what, what's going to fill it. And it's just kind of interesting that your concern about the step backs on the two buildings on the roundabout, you're not necessarily in support of that, because it minimizes some of the square footage, and you want to maximize the size, but you want to, doesn't apply to the building next door to it.
Doesn't apply to any of the buildings.
Well, I think the forty-foot minimum and the sixty-five-foot maximum is, is not just in that one building, it's throughout that entire corridor. So it would apply as such as described in the Pleasant Street section of the downtown overlay. So it's not just kind of spot in between those two buildings on the roundabout and the hotel, it's all the way down. So there's consistency of policy and clear expectations for what the developer can build, what it's to look like, and what can go in there are all very important things, so the market knows what can go in there, right? So two floors of, up to two floors of retail, and then mixed use above that, sixty-five feet max with an extra ten feet. There's the step backs. There's a minimum of forty feet anywhere in there. So if you find that the developer is like, you know what, I don't need sixty-five feet, market doesn't, isn't going to fill it, we're only going to do fifty, great, but you can't do thirty. That, again, makes sense to me. That's an investment. We've, as a community, have invested significant dollars into the public infrastructure upgrades, just like what happened at Pap's Farms, just like what happened at Fowler Village, Eagles Landing, and Park on the Bell. So we get a chance to give our input for the vision that gets to play out here. So, and this is just the gateway, the fifty acres approximately being developed right now is a gateway to two hundred and fifty acres next. So where the Worthington and Fowler Village are really kind of within the quaint downtown next to the lake, we're going to have two hundred and fifty acres being addressed with a hundred and, what is it, a hundred and seventy-foot hill, and all of the things that hopefully come with reactivating that. So this is, this is important to get together, to get right, to provide the square footage and the utilization for hotel, retail, and mixed use.
Yeah, I'm confused with some of your concerns.
Before you jump in, I just want to make a comment. When we start restricting people's ability and putting minimums, I think that puts us down a slippery slope in many aspects. And so we need to be a little bit careful on what we try to do, and maybe philosophically it all sounds great and hunky-dory, but when you really sit back and look at it, do we want to regulate and do we want to put those added layers? Now whether you want to have one step back, two step backs, fair discussion, but to tell somebody who's invested heavily, we want the best use of all of that land, and that, I would rather see a smaller building that brings in tax base than have it sit vacant like we see across the street, because then we have no tax base, we have no incremental income for the city and the taxpayers. So I think we need to be a little bit cautious. I'm just throwing that out for you guys to discuss. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, from a legal perspective, unless you rezone this area to a district that has minimum heights, you can't do it. So even under a PD, you'd have to rezone it. We have minimum heights in the downtown, right? And you would really have to rezone it to a district that has those minimum height restrictions, or else you can't legally do it. So I'm concerned about that, Lou.
Well, and I, I think the funny comment.
And there were probably good reasons for that to be done downtown. The question is whether that's what you want to do here. Alderman Rosak was next, and then Alderman Ellis.
I don't know why we keep going around and around on this, it's just strange to me, but we still have a five-foot, according to the exemptions we voted on last week with the first reading, we still have the five-foot step backs at the ground level. The Worthington does not have that, that's zero, it's right on the thing, right? So they have to be back five feet. My commentary about creating the canyon effect was that's, we looked at the Worthington as kind of the example of what we didn't want all the other buildings to look like downtown, which is why we did the step backs, and we had two sets of them. I really don't know the developer's going to care if there's an extra step back in there for a five-foot and ten-foot, it probably makes no difference. But again, I, I think the mayor's agreeing with my earlier comment, doing minimums here is a mistake. There was a comment early on when I said that the furniture should be close to matching, and I said I was micromanaging the furniture color. This is micromanaging a multi-million dollar development and telling them they have to have a minimum, and if you do that, they might not be able to fill the space, and I think that's a mistake. And I, I agree with Stan, I don't know if it's legal in what we've got here, so.
Alderman Ellis.
I concur with Matt. I don't think there should be any restrictions. I, I don't, nor any minimums. I think that really kind of handcuffs the developer with a specific minimum requirement. I think we're kind of splitting hairs here, guys. There's only a second reading, we've already, what I understand, you're, everybody's complying with what we had requested, and now we're saying, well, no, why don't we go ahead and put this in? Why don't we put that in? Why don't we put the other thing in? So bottom line here is, I have a problem with the restrictions, I think there should be none. So we can talk and talk and talk, and it could be eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning, it doesn't matter. I'm not going to change my opinion.
Alderman Zaffel.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo Alderman Rosak and Alderman Ellis in regards to her sentiment and opinion in regards to this. I'm comfortable on moving forward, talking with residents and constituents in the fourth Aldermanic District, as well as other individuals in the city of Oconomowoc that are excited about this and want to see it move forward. Only thing I've really heard is, is the Sundeck's the red bag Sundeck's? And I said, I don't know. But I feel if there was a lot of concern from the residents and our constituents, we would have a lot of people here. Did anyone register to speak on this item tonight?
No.
Thank you.
Alderman Kavieski.
Why are we even talking about going higher than what's currently allowed? Jason, or Matt, why, why are we going higher than what's currently?
Well, this isn't a TIF, and we're trying to make the highest and best use, and we're trying to add value, and this is, you know, they think this product would do well out there to create a presence when you get to that roundabout. They wanted some large buildings that, you know, and bring in extra rooftops for customers to utilize the commercial. There's a lot of reasons for it. It's value, it's people, it's energy, it's presence, it's visual impacts. I think it's a lot of reasons, and they asked for it, so.
All good, all, all good for the developer, all good for the community, all good for what we'd like to see from a vision standpoint in there, right? We're talking about a forty-foot minimum. Do you, do you see, as, if you would, do you, do you see the market telling you you only need a three-story building when we're giving a variance? We're changing rules here. This is, this is part of what we're addressing. So we're changing rules to give you additional height in one area and saying that it's overstepping our position to tell you that we'd like to see a minimum of forty feet, which represents potentially a three-story building or a two-and-a-half-story building, depending upon how you look at it, right? Do you feel as, as a developer who's partnered with the city, to provide the increment and the experience for the growth in this area, that forty feet minimum is not a good position?
So, let me explain it this way. So the market's always changing, right? So we know what the market is today, right? And I will say today, on the office side, the market is not as strong as it has been, right? So that is a little bit of a risk, like how long do you want to wait? Now, if you told me, hey, on that medical office site, you know, hey, it could be a medical office building, or you could do another one of these with first floor retail and more apartments? I have a lot less worry about a minimum height, because I, we will figure out, there's enough flexibility with a broad enough market, we can probably make it work, from that standpoint. You know, I think the council in the city has been great to work with for us. Another example is Sundeck's, right? Originally, we were going to tear that building down, steel prices shot up, and we're like, hey, we think we can get a better use in there more rapidly for the city and for the development if we try to repurpose that building. And we went out there and actually, you know, recruited several different grocery stores to take a look at it. It's a win, right? But that was something based on, hey, market conditions are changing, and we need to have the flexibility to adapt. And so I think that's what we're looking for from our standpoint, is trying to create a win-win for the community, because we're trying to produce a great product that's a great for the gateway of the city, that's vibrant, that's connected to the entire community, but we also have the bill to pay for, right? We want to pay off all the infrastructure investment, which will then, a lot of that's being done to benefit the lands of the West. So that's what we're trying to do, and, you know, it's, it's not, we have a vision, we're going to try to implement the vision, but we have to be realistic and adapt to what the marketplace is. And that's, that's what a good developer does, and doesn't go and say, this is what we want, and we're going to stick to it and ignore the market, because if you ignore the market, you end up with a lot of land or a lot of something that's not developed.
So to follow up on this, and if you could say that, I was in the commercial space for twenty-three years, and it sucks, and I got out of it because I couldn't make a living at it anymore. So I understand that, and I understand what the market powers and pressures do. And it's interesting that this conversation has taken this, you know, position that forty feet is overstepping our bounds, but making you do it as a medical office building is just fine. I'd rather say, look, you know what, doing forty feet and giving you the flexibility, it doesn't have to be a medical office building, that you could do whatever you need to do there, so you don't have a concern of what fills that space, and let the market determine that would be better.
Any other comments? Alderman Douglas.
I don't think we're pigeonholing them into a medical office building, it's just proposed use for that building, so they could essentially change their idea and put something else there. I mean, I do understand some of the height requirements of, we put seventy-five feet, and then, not that I think the developer would do it, but put a one-story building there. I mean, I don't think it's the best use for it, but I don't think it'd be wise for them to do it when that could be relocated to a different spot within there as well. I mean, I don't think we should be telling them it has to be forty feet or thirty-five. They're about making money, and the best way to make money is what they, what they do, so I don't think there should be any minimum height requirements.
I'm actually going to go Alderman Mulder first, just because you haven't had a chance to talk.
So we do, we do designate, we say that the building north of the mixed-use buildings is designated as a medical office building. Does that, does that prevent them from putting anything there, or does that dictate that it needs to be a medical office building? And is that even a term of art that describes something?
That was my reference of which buildings we were discussing.
That's what I thought.
I can remove that, that, it probably is a mistake to pigeonhole something that's specific in an ordinance. That can be anything that can, that conforms with the general commercial district requirements, any use.
That's what, I think that's, and I, I, I hear what you're saying, Lou. I think leaving the flexibility of the market and not putting the artificial, well, first of all, it sounds like we can't do that, we couldn't write this ordinance anyway without changing the, so we're probably six weeks out from being able to even implement a forty-foot minimum by the time we get that work done. But I think, I think the market decides that piece for us, and having the flexibility for the developer is a better choice than putting in an artificial forty-foot. Why forty-foot, why not thirty? I mean, it, there isn't a, the market's not driving that. The sixty-five feet with the extension of seventy-five feet is being driven by a market perspective.
Alderman Kavieski.
That's a great comment, Alderman Mulder. The place that we got to sixty-five feet, seventy feet, seventy-five feet are based on some of these renderings, right? And based on the downtown overlay, so that's where the forty-foot minimum came from. It wasn't arbitrary, I didn't say, you know, it was something that we've already put in place. And again, I understand the legal ramifications of that, I get it. But from a conversation standpoint, making your mind up before we have these decisions, we would have left the medical office building in, in the ordinance as read and pigeonholed that as a medical office building.
I don't.
In taxed, in the ordinance.
No.
In the ordinance.
Turn your microphone.
You should take it out.
Well, it's going to come out, but it wouldn't have pigeonholed us, because any permitted use in that district would be permitted, regardless of whether we referred to it as, you know, building A or a medical office building.
So there's, does that, what's permitted?
Does that, what's permitted there now, does that include retail and mixed use?
I don't know what is permitted in the commercial district. I believe that the permitted uses are the permitted uses, and we have a zoning administrator here that can speak to that.
Residential use is not listed as permitted use, but they are asking for an exemption of that, and they have an exhibit specifically showing which buildings would be allowed. That's exemption A uses. Residential use within the commercial zoning district is hereby approved, and then it's referenced in that one exhibit that they showed.
Alderman Rosak.
So, just an anecdotal. I don't know why we're kind of going back and forth so much with the height. I will tell you anecdotally, I just had an HOA meeting for my entire subdivision. I mean, it's not my entire district, but we're the people that are kind of right there. And there were 60 people on the Zoom call. I mentioned this project. I mentioned the article, the first reading, what we're looking at for heights. Any questions? Anybody got concerns? Speak now, forever hold your peace. Email me, call me. I heard nothing negative. I had several positive texts and emails after the meeting saying, "Yeah, this is great. I mean, build this place out. That was an absolute disaster, and whatever goes in there, we're happy with." So, to try to cut to the chase, here's what I'm going to propose an amendment to that last section that reads as follows. "The buildings north of the mixed-use buildings will be allowed to have a height of 65 feet that takes out the designation of them as medical office buildings or as a hotel." And then continuing on, "All four of these buildings are to contain building stepbacks of no less than five feet on the upper occupied level with the final building design approval to be by the common council." And we're legally fine doing that, Lou, and here's why. Because they agreed to it. They proposed it. They agreed to it. And all we're saying is, we have the final design approval. And I think we don't need to go back and forth architecturally. Let them go through the whole process, and then finally come back here to the council for the final design approval. We've actually done that before. We've had various developments come back for final design approval to us when they've been questionable, kind of big deals. Fowler Lake Village came back before us, and others did as well, so.
So, you put forth that as a motion?
Yes.
I second that motion. Zappel.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Alderman Shellpepper.
Well, I'm going to vote against it, because we're not going to do the stepbacks as we described. We're trying to mimic Fowler Lake Village. We're not doing that at all. We're now mimicking Worthington, so that's why I'm going to vote against it.
Alderman Kavieski.
Having this body be the final authority for approval without criteria, that's clear, is at your peril if you approve that. I will not support that. I don't think... I'm not an architect. I won't be able to speak to the architectural elements associated with final approval for a multimillion-dollar, multi-story gateway building. And if I'm not on council, and whoever's taking my seat, chances of them being qualified to do that is not very high either. So, I would absolutely support the rendering coming back to this body for review, but there is an architectural committee in place for a reason. There's plan commission in place for a reason. Those people are... Those entities, those bodies are supposed to be our experts within the city. We set the policy. If they're complying to the policy, then it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, so, I don't want to go back and forth, but if you want them to come back and get the renderings, and you have to approve the renderings, it's the same doggone thing.
I'm not saying that we should approve the renderings. We can review the renderings. A review and approval are different.
What's the point of reviewing it if you're not going to take action on it?
Then don't have us review it.
You're wrong, Lou. This does not create any legal issues. They came up here and told us, they, as part of the deal, when we were talking about this in the first reading, they said they would agree to that as a condition of this approval. They agreed to it. They said they were... That's fine. We can come back and do a final approval with the council. So, why would we say no?
What's the criteria? Tell me what the criteria is, and I can support you.
What's the criteria for anything we looked at? What was the criteria for the park-and- rec bathroom? "We don't like the trellis. Too far." Okay.
Not ordinance. We haven't set a developer on a path to...
I'll tell you what.
You can do it. You've made the motion. There's no way I'm...
This is the motion.
Okay, so, we're still open for discussion, so I'm going to stop for a second. Alderman Spiegelberg, you had a comment?
I'd like to call the question.
I'd call roll, please.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski.
Nay.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we go to the... That was the amendment, so now we go towards the second reading of the ordinance. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Before I do that, if I may, if you guys don't like something that I put in there, you can make an amendment. Make a motion, change whatever you want, and it can get voted on by the council. So, we can argue back and forth, make the motion. Add whatever stepbacks you want, add whatever design plan you've got set in mind. Here's your chance.
I'm sure.
So, we've amended it. The second reading has been amended.
We already have one Alderman who has stated publicly that he has set his mind at where he's going to stay.
Don't worry.
This is going to go the way it's going to go. I'll make a motion, and I'll watch it get defeated, because this is how it's going to work. That's... It's not in the best interest of this community, nor the development. I'd like to make a motion to amend.
What would you like to do, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to amend. I would like to make that motion to amend to include the stepbacks associated with that strip to replicate the Pleasant Street stepbacks, which is five feet.
It's five feet.
It is five feet, sir. I'm not done. "Five feet at the 30-foot or lower building height level. Buildings with an overall height of 50 feet or greater shall incorporate a minimum of one five-foot stepback in the first 30 feet, and a second at 10 feet stepback thereafter."
We have an amendment motion, or do we have a second?
Second.
Like to open up for any discussion? Call... Oops, Alderman Shellpepper.
The reason I'm supporting this motion is because now we're putting forward an amendment that will help these two buildings, the retail on the bottom, residential on the top, mimic something closer to Fowler Lake Village, and not something to the Worthington, as we've all agreed is the, you know, pinnacle of white elephant, you know, albatross in the community that we don't like. So, if you support the Fowler Lake Village design over the Worthington design, I would recommend you support this motion. Thank you.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I support the Fowler Lake Village design where it is, but not out in the area of Olympia.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Nay.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Pass.
I'm going to say nay.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Nay.
Nay? Nay, okay. It's a tie vote, Mayor?
Yeah, due to this location, my vote is a nay.
Okay, so it fails.
Back to the original ordinance. I'd like to entertain a motion for the original ordinance with the attached amendments that have been approved.
Rosak, so moved.
Second, Zappel.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please. Oh, sorry, Alderman Mulder.
And so, at the last, at the first reading, there was the discussion about the required setbacks on the paved terraces, and whether there should be some sort of impediments put in place to keep potential users of those terraces safe. I voted against that, and I will be on record saying my vote was wrong. I would vote for it today. As I drove by there, we're looking at terraces that are seven feet off of Highway 67, maybe eight feet, and now with no pavement, not only is there the issue of car traffic, but you could have a terrace sitting right next to what is going to become a more heavily-used pathway, especially if we get the tunnel done at some point. So, is there... Am I... Is it still possible to make an amendment at this?
Mr. Gallo.
Mr. Gallo, in the design review, will safety be taken into account?
Yes, we always do at the plan commission level. We will look at how close things are to the property line, and if we feel bollards are required, or a safety rail, or something, or set back a distance, we would certainly do that at the plan commission level. But this body's set policy that's saying, "We don't want it, period," you know, and if that's what you want. But the plan commission looks at all sorts of things related to safety and how close they are to the roadway, so.
Alderman Kavieski.
So, they look at it, but if nothing is required, there's nothing required, right? So, that's what we're talking about here with this ordinance, and I was vocal about it before. I'd like to offer an amendment that would include the requirement for the safety elements, and the safety elements, I'd like to remain broad, right? It could be bollards. It could be whatever is approved, and the area adjacent to the Summit Avenue corridor.
So, you have a motion for an amendment. Is there a second?
Second, Mulder.
We already have a motion on the floor and a second.
I'll withdraw that. I'll withdraw the other motion.
You'll rescind that motion?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Send the amendment, correct? Or no?
Pardon me? So, now we're addressing the amendment from Alderman Kavieski. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? And I think it's... Jason, do you want to summarize it just to make sure? Because I want to make sure we have what I think we have. Because it was different from what was discussed before with restrictive values and different things here. Now, my understanding and hearing is that you want to make sure, which I think everybody would agree to, that we have broad-based safety there, which is done at the plan commission level, but you want it documented, is what I'm understanding. Is that a fair summary?
It provides plan commission that council has identified that as a very important thing, and...
I think that's very fair. I think, first of all, as a plan, being on the plan commission, we look at safety very, very critically, so it doesn't need to be there for the commission. But I think it's nice that the council is sending a message to the plan commission that is very important to the council. So, we have a motion and a second on this amendment. Any further discussion, Mr. Rosak?
Just the way the motion was written, it said Summit Avenue corridor. I'm assuming what you really mean is between Olympia Field Drive and Paps, the area where we've allowed the terrace into, right?
Correct.
Not the whole corridor. So, I think the motion properly should be for some type of safety concerns, safety barriers to be in place in the terrorist area between Summit Avenue, on Summit Avenue, between Olympia Fields Drive and this Paps Farms. Is it a boulevard? I don't know what it is there, by the roundabout.
Farms Road.
Paps Farms Road, okay. If you guys, as a friendly amendment, would agree to that change, I think that's what...
I would concur to that.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
So, let's move back. We had the motion from Alderman Rosak rescinded for the original ordinance. Would you like to rephrase that, sir?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move forward the second reading as twice amended.
Second, Zappel.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski.
Nay.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
So, moves forward from the second reading, and we'll move on to our next item, a new business, which is Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3007 authorizing participation in the development of Natural Resources Municipal Dam Grant Program for the Peacock Dam Maintenance.
No.
Mr. Frye.
I don't know why I always end up with the controversial items at the end, but we'll try and get this one through. This is the standard resolution required by the Department of Natural Resources when you submit for a grant. We're going to submit for a grant for the Peacock Dam maintenance that we're looking to complete. Rounding up the number slightly, it's about $150,000 project, of which we're eligible for 50%, so $75,000. So, looking for support of that resolution.
Like to entertain a motion, please?
So, move, Zappel.
Second, Ellis.
Second, Ellis. Any further...
One move, seven seconds.
Any further seconds? I mean, any further discussion? You guys are rapid-fire here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's move on.
Thank you.
Staff reports. Judge Kay, we'd love to have you come up and give us an update on the Lake Country Municipal Court. Thank you, sir, for coming and waiting.
Thank you, and Mr. Mayor.
Being brief.
You know us lawyers. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for inviting me, and clerks, and all the person and administrators. Once a year, I try to send out my annual state-of-the-court correspondence. I sent that out. I have extra copies if you guys need a copy. That might have been placed in your packet. But just to kind of give the Alderman here and Mr. Mayor a quick synopsis for our budget, which we are always very concerned about at Lake Country Municipal Court, not to be worried about income expenses, it's revenue. But this year, we turned out a budget that was surplus of $11,000. We had a projected loss of about $45,000, so that's a big swing. I'm very proud of that. What happened to kind of make that happen was, first of all, COVID diminished magically. The tickets started flowing more frequently, and so that helped. But the biggest factor really was, we had change in our staff. So, we had two full-time clerks and two part-time clerks. Our old clerk, Pam, retired. I promoted Terry, our deputy clerk to full-time clerk, replaced her with a part-time staff position. So, got rid of a full-time salary for a part-time salary. Also, what that did is, we got rid of two health insurance positions for the old clerk, for herself and her husband. And then our deputy clerk had a child that was adult now, but was on our plan, but got hired by the city of Conemawoc, so we moved her over to your side. So, basically, we saved, you know, three positions of health insurance. Health insurance is 11,000, 12,000 bucks a year, you know, plus not sufficient salary, plus an increase in revenue for the citations, so that is what occurred there. So, we're very proud of that. New courthouse is wonderful. I'm so glad that Kmart didn't want to buy that old century building. You guys did, but it's fantastic. I talk about it all the time. The chambers are fantastic. Many of you had tours when we first opened up. We used that chambers, my office, as a juvenile room also. Basically, that's what it's for, so it's like right off the bench. And so, we have our juveniles in private, which we're supposed to do. In the old days, when we were up here, it was kind of... The kids kind of came up there where the mayor was sitting, that's where I used to sit. We kind of hushed up the microphones and whispered, but it was kind of janky the way it was. So, we, you know, I really appreciate that. The clerk space is wonderful. The main courthouse courtroom area, we share with the city all the time. City has wonderful use of that space, meetings, blood drives. Every once in a while, I have a mock trial there with a high school kid, so we all share that space. We have great bailiffs, great court staff. We have great morale, and would be reminiscent, and I mentioned it, obviously, you know, we're all sorry that Bill Chapman passed away. He was our administrator forever, and really was one of our chief architects for developing the court. And I always say that if it wasn't for Bill Chapman, probably would not have been that we were able to form that joint municipal court. Back then, there was eight or nine municipalities. He represented probably seven of them. So, by him going to all of his local meetings and representing you guys, was able to get all the communities together to be on board, to convince all communities that it was a good thing to have, you know, one judge, one clerk, one copy machine, one space versus everybody doing things piecemeal. So, kudos to Mr. Chapman for that. Don Weaver now has been voted in to be our new administrator. He's been around forever, does our budget, so we didn't lose anything in continuity, and things are going well. To the back of my letter, I was attached this pie chart. I know Ms. Riffle's seen it 18 times, because he's in a lot of municipalities I go to. But the pie chart, I think, is illustrative of what happens with a typical fine. So, a typical fine that comes in... So, a typical fine that comes into our court, just when we pay, it's 124 bucks. What happens to that money? Well, the stake is 25% because they're the state. Can't argue with that. You know, 8% goes to the jail, all right? 27% goes to our court for our budget, 40% goes to municipality. So, we live on that, on that 27%. Our budget is about 360. So, we were a little bit, you know, over that this year as far as surplus. So, that's what happens there. Overall, and I do have some spreadsheets if you want those or printouts, overall revenue to the court is over 2.1 million a year. So, everybody gets their, 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 their share of the revenue. We pay all of our expenses, the state gets their, their cut because I always laugh how much they get because they, they're just the state. So, it works out well. We never have to, we, knock on wood, we've not had to go back to the communities and ask any of the communities to help fund our court. We are the largest joint municipal court in the state, 20 communities. Most other municipal courts in the state, every year, they go back to their common council or their Alderman and ask them, hey, we brought in 30, we're 20 short, can you guys throw in extra money? It's usually what happens most of the courts, so that does not happen with us, so.
Judge Kay, what challenges do you see in the next 12 to 24 months in your role in the court? Are there things that we, the council should be aware of?
I don't really see any challenges. One other thing that we did with the help of the operations committee, we moved part of our collection system to SDC, State Department of Collections. So, in the past, if somebody did not pay a citation and if they still lived in the area, I had two alternatives. One, suspend their license. Now, if they didn't have a license, they don't care, big whip, right? And the other one was to do a warrant, a writ of commitment. So, we did a lot, a lot of writs, probably signed 40 to 45, 50 writs a week. So, now that we're in SDC, we refer a great bunch of those cases to SDC. That's a division of the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. They are the government and they can literally go into your, that person's checking account, intercept their tax return and, and do that. So, this tax season will be our first year experiencing SDC, so we're hoping that will be a good, a good thing for the court. I don't see any problems going forward. You know, we're, we're big enough physically, the clerks have great space, our computers all work, the bench is wonderful. We love sharing space with the city. We pay our rent on time.
Good. Any questions from council? Alderman Kavieski?
Wasn't too long ago, we were in to see you and we contributed to your pie chart with, with a young driver and.
So, you personally contributed, is what you.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Hope he contributed.
I just, I just have to say, you know, as, as a father, as a, as a member of the community, how, how well you handle those in your court? From 16 to 100, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. You, you handle them with respect. You, you make sure that you, make sure they understand what is going on, what happened and, and you know how to apply the law.
Well, thank you.
And that's not something that is said lightly. Applying the law is, is a critical part of maintaining a safe community. And we have one of the safest in the country. So, it's, it's a joint effort between the judicial and enforcement. And I appreciate your approach, it means a lot. And I hope you stay around for, for a very, very long time.
Thank you very much. Alderman Rozak?
Very briefly, Judge, thanks for coming in. I love the part of your summary where you said that you thought COVID was going to, you have a loss and instead you've still got people moving around, walking around getting tickets, so that was kind of, that's good. I think your, the court system that Bill set up and that you continue to run is not only does a good job, but it's a really, really good example of collaboration amongst municipalities. I mean, in one sense, we're all part of one big community in this area, in a lot of senses. We, we create artificial lines in different areas, sometimes those lines don't even make sense. The Lake Country Municipal Court and how it was set up and how it expanded blurs those lines and makes us more of a community and allows us to share assets and collaborate. And it's, it's a good thing and it's something that we should consider in other areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for letting me be here. And any other questions, you can call me or call my clerk, Terry Bellunge, she's got the real answers.
Personally, I hope I don't see an upbuilding.
Might be part of that chart someday, right?
I sure hope that. Thank you very much. Let's move, move on to any reports or comments from Alderman? Excuse me, any further staff reports, Mark? Any further staff?
Mayor, I do have something just from Alderman.
Oh, I just want to make sure there's no more staff. Chief, you're good? Okay. Let's move on to reports and comments from Alderman. Alderman Rozak?
So, I'm just passing something around, I'll give the clerk a copy. Sorry, actually, I don't think I made another copy for you, Mayor, I apologize, I can send you one. It's just for the Alderman, it's something to consider. And this is actually fortuitous because I printed this off, these two articles off from the December 2021 League of Municipalities magazine. They actually had some really interesting articles in here. The one that caught my eye first was collaborations part of the big picture. It was fortuitous that the judge came up here, I did not plan this ahead. Looks like I did, which maybe makes me look really smart, but I actually printed this off a while back, but we never really had time and I didn't want to talk about it. So, if anyone missed the article, I think it's really interesting on the collaboration between the communities. It talks about EMS, it talks about different structures. Obviously, the municipal court is a really, really good example of collaboration. And I think as a council, you know, the next two years at least I'm on, I want to start exploring as an objective of our council, other ways to collaborate like municipal court does, like Western Lakes Fire District does. There are other ways for us to collaborate. We have a lot of duplicate services literally within areas that come into our community. You have the town and Summit and these people like are right next to us and yet they have their own plow guys, is just an example. They have their own plow guys, their own plow administration, their own plow trucks, literally plowing within what people would consider part of the city. So, why, why are we not trying to work like the municipal courts did years ago, like Western Lakes does, to try to combine some of those things? Maybe we can't, right? But maybe there's a chance for us to do that and make that, you know, smart. And it's, it's going to be a slow process and we have to start picking things out that we could do, like, could we share plow services with Summit and Dousman and whoever and save 50 grand a year, 25 grand a year? Let's start looking at those options, let's start talking to our neighbors. The other article, and this is not to take a swipe at anyone, it's just, I thought it was interesting because I've had multiple debates about this. It's on presiding officers and agendas. It's not a swipe at anyone in, in particular, but I think we should look at it and I think it's something over in the next year, the council should consider how we actually run our agendas through, through the mayor, through the city administrator and what's the proper role for the council in doing those agendas and actually come up with some type of policy related to that. Again, slow process, it's something we should talk about, we should hammer out, but I think it's something we should look at. And they, they had a really good piece in, in it, and so I thought I'd bring it to everyone's attention.
Yeah, if you see some collaborative ideas, please share it with Mark. I know they do some of that already, Matt, with regard to plows.
That's awesome.
But if you see anything else, you know, let Mark know because we're happy to look into it.
I'm sure everyone's going to read that article multiple times when they go home tonight and come up with a lot of great ideas. No, no.
Alderman Kavieski have a comment?
I've read that article and it's, it is very good. To, to the point of those discussions, they're not always easy, they're not always quick, but they're important. And the discussions we had tonight about the Olympia project mirror that. Coming in, having those discussions make for better things. Not everybody always gets their way. It's not the way it's supposed to be. And at the end of the day, what it's supposed to be is a better project, a better policy. And that's why we're here. And again, we leave these chambers and we keep talking to each other and we're cordial and we're professional. And that is rare in today's society. And I hope that it sets a tone for the rest of this year within our community and beyond, that those discussions are good. It's good to have some passion behind it. And at the end of the day, you shake hands and you leave whatever it is for another day.
As long as we only talk in these chambers and not outside of these chambers.
That's another topic. Any further comments from Alderman? With no additional comments from the mayor, I wish everybody a wonderful night and entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, Kavieski. Favor?
Aye.
Everyone for coming.